Ready? Okay. Hi. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of December 5th, 2013. May I have a roll call of the members?
Alan Bucknam.
Present.
Amanda Weaver.
Present.
Tracy Gildner, absent. Ann Brinkman.
Here.
Steve Timms.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Thank you.
May we have a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have approval of the order of tonight's agenda?
Madam Chair, I am moved to approve the order of the agenda.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion approved, five to zero.
Now may I have approval of the minutes of October 17th, 2013?
I move to approve the minutes of October 17th?
Second.
Please vote. Now is the public forum.
Sorry about that. Motion approved, four to zero with one extension. Scott Ohm.
Now is the time for public forum. This is the time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda. Public comments may be limited to three minutes. There's nobody in the audience. We can't hear you those on TV, so we will move on to the public hearing. First hearing, we have two hearings tonight. First hearing is case number WPA-13-02, a resolution adopting an addendum, Three Mile Plan to the Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, thank you. As I think most of you know, I'm Sally Payne, a planner in the Community Development Department here on my annual visit with the Three Mile Plan. And I apologize for not including in your packet the recommended motion, as Scott pointed out. So I think Kim should have distributed those to you, so you should have that in front of you at this point. And overall, I was going to keep this pretty brief, since I think most all of you are familiar with the Three Mile Plan and the process. But I'll kind of give a little background and get in quickly into some of the specifics of the plan. Basically, the Colorado State statutes require that jurisdictions adopt a Three Mile Plan for their jurisdictions. And the purpose of the plan is for a community to identify how they would envision land developing within a three-mile radius of their communities, unincorporated land, within a three-mile radius if that land were to be annexed. And the statutes state that the plan should generally describe what land uses would be recommended in those areas and also generally speak to transportation and community services in those areas. It does not, the state statutes do not require specific policies for those things. And in this case, the plan is being adopted as an addendum to the city's comprehensive plan. Some comp plans actually do include areas outside of their jurisdiction in case they were to annex lands. We did not do that in our 2009 plan update. And in the comp plan, we reference the Three Mile Plan as a document if we were to look at annexing land and what those land uses, recommended land uses might be. The plan needs to incorporate any newly annexed or de-annexed land in the previous year. And in 2013, with the last Three Mile Plan being in 2012, December 2012, there have not been any lands annexed or de-annexed from the community. And as I said, the plan needs to be updated annually and goes to the Planning Commission only. It does not go on to City Council for adoption. And for those of you that remember the plan from last year, I decided this year to basically rewrite the entire plan. The plan in previous years had been very focused on Clear Creek Crossing and the potential Cabela's development. And since that project is on hold, I thought it really, you know, made sense to, you know, rewrite it at this point. And I also did research on plans other communities have done. And I found ours to be really more complicated and cumbersome than it needed to be. And actually looked at examples from some of the state plans they had on the state website. So, you know, I really tried to kind of simplify the plan from what it's been in the past. The plan will be adopted by resolution, as I said, as an amendment to the comp plan. So maybe I'll just take a minute here to go briefly, step through the plan rather briefly. On map one in the back of the document, it basically shows the three-mile radius around the city. And obviously, we are just focused on those unincorporated lands to the northwest, west, and southwest of the community. You know, obviously not looking at any incorporated lands in Arvada, you know, Denver, Lakewood. In terms of, on page two, in terms of land uses in those unincorporated areas, they all fall in Jeffco, obviously, and they fall within two of their county land use plans. And one of them is the North Plains Area Plan, and the other is the Central Plains Plan. And both of those plans generally spell out recommended land uses. And they do touch on generally, you know, services, transportation, you know, other issues in the area. And if you look at map two in the back of the document, it shows that three-mile radius to the west of the city, you know, showing the area covered by the North Plains Plan and then the Central Plains Plan. As I mentioned before, the City of Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan does not include any recommendations for unincorporated lands adjacent to city boundaries. But it's, you know, we would look at, if we, you know, were to be annexing any of the unincorporated lands, you know, we would first review those county plans. And then in addition, obviously, do, you know, an extensive, you know, analysis of the existing land uses. And then make recommendations that would be consistent with our land use, you know, designations or categories in our current comp plan. And basically, there on page three, as we spell out, you know, we would be making recommendations for a neighborhood land use in those existing residential areas to the, you know, primarily west, you know, north, southwest of the city. Parks and open space that would take in the existing golf course, the existing parks, Clear Creek Flood Plain. And then also an employment designation, which is our designation in the city's comp plan to address those areas, existing areas along 44th Avenue and State Highway 58 that are currently, you know, light industrial, you know, storage and similar uses. So, you know, generally, that's what we'd be looking at in terms of, you know, land uses if we were to look at annexing any areas. And just quickly going on to page four, which is transportation and services. Again, there are county documents that address these things. These documents were developed in collaboration with, you know, the jurisdictions in the county. So we were involved in development of these. And for, you know, for the transportation, there's the Jefferson County Master Plan in addition to a countywide transportation plan and a major thoroughfare plan. You know, so those would be, you know, kind of guiding documents as we would be looking at any lands we might annex. And in addition, in our comprehensive plan, we do have a structure plan, what we call the Transportation Structure Plan, which essentially identifies how we would make connections to, you know, roadways outside of our current boundaries. And then again, the North Plains Area Plan and the Central Plains Area Plan do speak to, you know, it varies kind of from the plans and how much detail they go into, but they do speak to, you know, transportation and service issues in those areas and would certainly look to those as guidance. In terms of the community services and utilities, services in those unincorporated areas are currently served by Jefferson County or there are several special districts. And really, that situation would continue at this point. And that's explained, you know, in more detail in that section in terms of fire protection, the water sanitation districts, and then in terms of, you know, any stormwater facilities. So, you know, those would kind of be the guiding documents and how we would look at that. And then finally, in terms of parks and open space, again, the county has a Jefferson County bicycle plan and pedestrian plan, which we, again, participated in. Mark Westberg here, who's with us tonight, has worked a lot on that in terms of connection with our own city, you know, bike-ped plan. So really, unless there's some specific questions, I'll conclude there. I'd be happy to answer any questions or take any comments. And as I said, the plan would be adopted as a resolution, as an amendment to the city's comp plan.
Alan?
Just one question. The legends on the North Plains and the other map here, the Central Plains, the DU slash AC abbreviation, can you just let us know what that stands for? It's in the residential recommendation legends?
D.C.
Swelling units.
Swelling units.
For acre.
For acre.
All right. That makes sense. Thank you.
Sure.
Amanda? Scott?
I think the only question I have is on the map two, the Central Plains. Does that, that matches up, I guess, with the map four, the Central Plains Area Plan?
Okay, give me one. So our, okay, so map two. I, I'm sorry, Commissioner Ong, could you repeat the question?
I guess the, I guess the boundaries look like they kind of don't match up on map two, the Central Plains and then the Central Plains Area Plan on page four.
Okay.
More towards the bottom. I see where there's the Crown Hill Cemetery insert, and then you go away to the bottom. There's that little rectangle on the bottom. And I'm not really seeing that on the, on the last page, on the Central Plains Area Plan. And I understand that the page four is probably a much more detailed plan and that the map two is probably more of a, kind of the broad, big picture.
Right. Yeah, I mean, we were, you know, didn't mean to take it to the level of detail, obviously, that is in the county plans. But certainly, we can revisit the boundaries from those specific plans as to what we have on this map two and be sure that, you know, we're matching them up as closely as we can.
Okay. Thank you.
I just had one question. On the North Plains with the Fairmont close-up, it says on the top right. Is there a reason at the bottom the 24 industrial was circled? I mean, it's Wheat Ridge.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay. On the North Plains Plan, the map.
Map, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
At the bottom, we're in the key, 24 is circled, which is the industrial, which is, happens to be Wheat Ridge.
I apologize. That was just my note.
Okay.
And it just, I didn't.
I didn't know if you were highlighting something for us.
No. That was just, when I was reviewing all of this, I just circled that as a note for me. And then when I went to make copies, I didn't get it clean.
Oh, that's fine. No, I was just making sure that we weren't missing something.
Yep.
Are there any other questions or comments, or staff? Then I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve Planning Commission Resolution Number 2013-03, a resolution concerning the adoption of an amendment to the Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan of the Three Mile Plan.
Second.
Please vote. Oh, any comment? Please vote.
Motion approved, five to zero.
Okay.
Thank you. So, the next thing on our agenda is case number ZOA-13-02, amendments to Chapter 26, zoning and development code concerning flood plain control.
And I think Mark Westberg, my colleague, who should be joining me at the front table, is, oh. Oh, thanks, Sally, is going to be doing the majority of the presentation. But just to give some introductory remarks for the record, Meredith Record, Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. The flood plain regulations are housed in Article 8 of Chapter 26, which is the zoning and development code. And what we're proposing is a repeal and reenactment of the entire section with sort of four major goals in mind. First of all, there are some new state regulations that need to be adopted in order for us to stay current and within the National Flood Insurance Program Plan. We have adoption of new flood plain maps that have much better information. We've actually been administering those for the last several years. So that's a second part of it. A lot of the language inside the ordinance is old and kind of tired and doesn't really match with industry standards. And then the final thing is that currently, the Community Development Department is the entity responsible for processing flood plain applications. But Public Works is really the department within the city that has the flood plain administrator and all the technical knowledge. And so that last piece of it, as we're shifting the responsibilities from planning to be the paper processor over to Public Works. So more of a technicality, we still will follow the same practices and procedures. We still always collaborate on any sort of flood plain issue. And Mr. Westberg has been the primary author of the ordinance. And so he has a PowerPoint he'd like to go through, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Okay, so without further ado, we'll just, we'll just jump right in. So this is the flood plain updates. Our two big, our two only flood plains are Lena Gulch and Clear Creek within the city limits. There's a flood plain for Sloan's Lake that gets close, but doesn't quite make it. So just wanted to run through some things with you real quick. The same presentation's been shown a couple of different times with some variation. We've got some, as Meredith mentioned, some ordinance amendments. There's new state regulations they adopted back on January 14th of 2011. They gave us three years to adopt them. We didn't purposefully wait for the last minute. We were also waiting for the new flood plain maps to be adopted by FEMA, which we expected to happen back in 2011. They've been a little delayed because of some other things. So they finally got adopted, as we'll talk about here in a little bit. So we're sort of scrambling to get this all done now at the last minute. FEMA adopted the new maps that we've been using back on August 5th of 2013. And we have to adopt them by February 5th. They give us six months, basically, to get those adopted. And we're on schedule to do that, too. We're on schedule for the first one, too. We're just going to make it by one day. And as Meredith mentioned, some updated terminology. Right now, we call our permits special exception permits, which makes it feel like you're getting away with something. And our code actually reads like you're getting away with something. And it's not. These are permits that we issue to people to do things that are allowed within the flood plain. And whenever you use words like variance or exception with FEMA, they get excited because they think you're allowing people to get away with things, and we're not. We're allowing them to do things that are allowed in the flood plain. And then also, we call them flood regulatory districts. The industry standard now is special flood hazard area. So that when people that are working in our city and are used to working in other places, when they come to our city, we want to have the same kind of terminology so people understand what we're talking about. If any of our residents go on the FEMA website or anything else, that way, all the terminology will match up. And we just think it's going to be a lot easier for folks to sort of keep up with things. So the schedule is, we had a public meeting back on October 23rd. And the last time that I was here before you guys, which I think was your last meeting back in mid-October, we talked about the public meeting. We had around 100 people plus attend. Based on the sign-up sheet, we had over 80 sign up, but we think the count was probably closer to 100. And then we just went to study session at City Council back on November 18th to bring them up to speed and to share what happened at the public meeting and things. So we're here tonight, and then we go to first reading with City Council on December 9th. So we're really glad that all five of you showed up tonight, so that we have a quorum. Thanks for that. And then we go our second reading, which is January 13th, which of course is the day before it's due to be adopted. We have to adopt the state regs. And then the new map effective date also is the February 5th, as we mentioned before. So the new state regulations, one of those, they had a whole host of things they tried to get passed by the state, but there was a massive uproar on the part of a lot of people. So they really simplified it down to just some basic things. Is that the minimum free board is of one foot. And that's if your flood gets to this height, we want all the houses to be built one foot above it, is basically what that does. We already use this standard, so there's no change to our ordinance for that one. And then, but there is a change for the minimum free board for critical facilities. They want all those to be at two feet. They want an extra level of protection for those facilities. And the code has the list of all the things in there. It's basically these four categories: essential facilities, hazardous material sites, at-risk populations, and vital facilities. Essential are things like fire departments, police departments, emergency responders, that kind of thing. Hazardous materials, it's anybody, you've got to meet certain state limits to be considered that. At-risk populations are things, are populations of folks that are going to need help getting out. So senior centers, daycares, nursing homes, even group homes for people that have various issues and things. Those are at-risk populations. And vital facilities is like City Hall. I'm not sure why we're only vital and not essential, but it's things that keep things running. But if you lose them for a day or two, maybe... But if you lose them for a day or two, maybe it's not the end of the world. And then the other thing that, that does have an impact on us is that, that areas that are removed from floodplain with fill. If someone gets what's called a letter of map revision with fill, in which they fill a low area to build houses on it, the rule is you basically, you can't have a basement, is the way the, the rule turns out. They still have the same free board requirements. So you basically can't put a basement there. They had a bunch of issues in some of the other areas, not in Wheat Ridge. I think Douglas County was a big one, where they were filling these large areas of floodplain. They put all these houses in the basements, and every time the creek came up, the houses all flooded. The basements all flooded because of groundwater, because water's going to go where it's always been, regardless of what you do. And so, so they've passed this reg that basically there's no basements if you've removed an area from fill by floodplain, is sort of the new regulation. So the current maps, which are called the firm maps, that stands for flood insurance rate map, is what that stands for. But those are the firm maps, and those are the old paper copies. Those were originally mapped back in the mid to late 70s. And they have been updated since then. The latest revision was back in 2003. And that's for little things. They just periodically update because of some small changes in different areas. There's not been a comprehensive update in the maps since the 70s, though. So we, we sort of felt like we were due. So our new maps are called D-Firm, and the, the D just stands for digital. Everything's gone into the point that it's, it's GIS-based, it's all in the computer now. And we have a lot of abilities because of that being in the computer. The updated mapping was done back in '07, but in the process of getting those converted to the D-firms is what caused the delay on the part of FEMA. We got looped into a whole D-Firm conversion for the entire county. The reasons for the update was, as Meredith mentioned, we had updated and better topography. We also had updated calculation methods, things of, computers have gotten a lot better since the 70s. And the sponsors of that were Urban Drainage, and I'm going to put a plug for them. I can't say enough good things about Urban Drainage. Those guys do a great job doing what they do. When we had our storm back in '09, they helped us get all the trees that, that were knocked down by that storm cleared out of the floodplain areas. They also responded, they've been responding a lot lately with the floods we had back in September this year. And they help us with ongoing maintenance and, and just the technical expertise they provide to us by doing things like helping us update our maps. There were also some other agencies, Denver, Jefferson County, and Nevada were also involved in this because Clear Creek goes through all those jurisdictions. So the big change, what's, what's the difference between the old maps and the new maps? Right now, 55% of our current floodplain is open space. And that's a great thing, because it doesn't matter if it floods there, it's open space. And so we actually, we're going to talk about this later. We've got a lot of points for that. But the number of parcels, not necessarily houses, so this is parcel. Some people have two parcels in their lot. We have a lot of parcels that are in our open space, as we mentioned before. There's 603 parcels in the current floodplain, 788 in the new floodplain. So we actually had 82 parcels removed as a part of this project with the new mapping, and we had 267 added. I'm not sure of the house count. We haven't done the math on that. We haven't looked at the maps and counted up all the houses. But we think it's somewhere between 100 to 200 houses are probably now in the floodplain that weren't before. It's a really, really big impact for mostly along Clear Creek. Most of the houses that were moved from the floodplain were up along Lena Gulch. So this is just a quick map showing the, the areas. And this is one of the biggest impacted areas, is the Clearvale subdivision. This is, at the bottom of the screen, you see where it's labeled 44th Avenue Bridge. This is basically Clear Creek downstream of 44th. The dark blue line that you see is the current map, the current floodplain. The shaded area is the, what's proposed as the new floodplain. And so right where it points, Clearvale subdivision, we've got a lot of houses in that neighborhood that were not in the floodplain before and now are. Working our way upstream from the 44th Avenue Bridge to Kipling, you can also see there's a fair number of houses, they're right in the middle of the map, that are now on the north side, that are now on the floodplain. And unfortunately, to some of those neighbors, a lot of those folks have basements, which means their finished floor is considerably below the elevation of the floodplain. The area that's sort of right below that is the Denver Water Ponds that are in there, if you're familiar with where those are. Going on to the west, that shows where Tabor Lake and Prospect Park are. We do have some houses in between those two ponds, the lakes that are, sorry, I call them ponds, that are now in the floodplain that weren't before because of the new mapping. And then going up Lena Gulch, this is sort of the upper part of Lena Gulch. One of our planning commissioners owns some property just to the right and up from where the two red dots are there. And the two red areas, those are two houses that we purchased. When our, when our mapping was redone in '07, there was a master plan that was also done. It identified that in order to do a project to remove some houses from the floodplain, we had to purchase those two properties. So I had the weird idea, hey, let's go out there and just see if one's for sale. Well, lo and behold, one was. And so we got some help from Urban Drainage. They paid for half of it. We paid the other half. We bought that property, tore down the house. And then in the process of just talking among the neighbors there, we let the guy know next door that if he ever wants to sell, we're not going to condemn his property and steal it from him. If he ever wants to sell, we'd be a willing buyer. And about two years later, he did want to sell, and so we bought that house and, and tore that down. The first house he bought actually had a large tennis court with a big tennis court fence around it, which would have been a disaster if we'd ever had a flood coming down the creek. So, so from a practical standpoint, just by buying the houses and getting all that stuff out of the way, we've helped things out. And then you can see in the bottom left of the screen there, all the houses, the parcels and stuff, that are no longer in the floodplain that used to be. The reason is, is there was some error in modeling the 32nd Avenue Bridge back in the 70s. And so they thought it overtopped 32nd, flooded those two streets on either side, and it actually doesn't. And this is the last little bit, as it goes towards Maple Grove Reservoir. So there's a thing called the National Flood Insurance Program. You might have seen NFIP coming up in some of the news articles about the flooding that's happened recently in the different places. Basically, the, the, the private insurance companies back in the 70s said, we're not going to cover flood losses. There's no way we'll make money at it. And so the, the feds introduced the National Flood Insurance Program. And it, it is sold by private insurance agents, but it's all with the federal government. And, and up until the time Katrina and everything hit, they actually, they would occasionally go in the red, but they'd always come right back out again. And then Katrina sort of hit and caused a huge hole in the, in the finances. And then when Superstorm Sandy and a few other hurricanes hit, they're in a hole of several tens of billions of dollars right now to the, to the federal government, the NFIP is. So they're trying to fix that, and we're going to talk some more about that later. But the community rating system is something that they instituted to try to encourage jurisdictions to do, have activities and, and adopt regulations that would help manage those floodplains and reduce the level of risk. And we do that, we do that pretty well, actually. We're currently a class six. And it's a scale of one to 10. There's only one class one, and that's some overachiever in California who's a class one. In the state of Colorado, there are only eight other communities that are class six or above. And all of those communities are things like Westminster, Nevada, that have over 100,000 people. So for us to be a class six in the, in that group is a, is a pretty big deal. And it's a big testament to Meredith, who, who got us to a class seven. And then after I started, we, we improved one more class. And we're going to try and do some things here to, to help that out. What that does for us is it gives all of our people that have policies in the city a 20% discount right off the top of what the policy would cost. So if it's a $1,400 policy, it's more like an $1,100 policy for our folks. We think that's a big deal. In 2012, because that's the last time I could find numbers, we had 177 policies within the, the limits of the city. And the premiums, you can see, was a pretty big number. But you can also see the savings is a really big number, too. So we're pretty pleased with, with what we've been able to do for our folks on that. They came out with a new manual in 2012. Every five years or six years or something, they do a new manual, update things and try to... What they do is they tweak where you get points to try to encourage behavior that will, that will cause less risk. And so, so one of the things they did that really helps us out is the open space credits got higher. We have just over 2,000 points, which is what gets us into the class six. Almost 500 of those points is because so much of our floodplain's open space. That now is almost going up by 50%. So we're going to have almost 750, 780 points now, just because of the amount of floodplain we have in the open space. And what that does for us is that we're probably going to request a re-verification visit in 2014 instead of just waiting for it in 2015. Every five years, we go through a verification where they, they show up and ask us questions and make sure we're behaving ourselves. We think very strongly that we can get to a class five. And there's only two communities in Colorado that class five are better. Arvada is one, and they've actually got a person up there that, that dedicates a fair portion of their time to just doing the CRS manual. And then Fort Collins, which has an entire staff of folks for that, they're actually a class four community. They're, they're the gods of floodplain, as far as, as Colorado goes. Because they had a flood in '97 that killed people. And they were able to really, you know, take that horrible incident and, and respond in a way that, that was really positive. And they bought a bunch of properties in the floodplain. They did a lot of activities. They really, the, the citizens got on board with what the city was wanting to do to try to manage their risk and not have a repeat of that event. And in the recent flood that they had up there, which wasn't as bad as what Boulder and some other places got, they didn't have any loss of life. You can tell that all those activities have really helped them out, and, and they don't have near the risk they used to have. What that would do is if we get to class five, is we'd get another 5% knocked off the bill. Which, which for a lot of the folks, you know, our floodplains that we have in the city are not the wealthiest parts of the community. They're the folks that are, that are, you know, trying to make ends meet and just getting by day to day. And, and what we're going to talk about in a little bit has a big impact on that. So we think, we think getting to this kind of a discount and maybe even above, because I'm a real optimistic guy, is a big deal for us. So in 2012, Congresswoman Biggert and Waters sponsored a bill to try to make the NFIP solvent again. And so what they did is, and their goal was to make it solvent, what they did is they wanted the insurance rates to be more risk-based. So the lower your property is in the floodplain, the higher your rate should be. The higher your property is, the lower your rate should be. It makes a tremendous amount of sense. And it was, it was one of the few bipartisan things to come out of 2012. And, and, and actually passed with a lot of stuff. But because of some of the impacts that we'll talk about here in a minute, Congress is looking at trying to delay or slow down some of that implementation because it's having a huge impact on folks. And it has the potential to have a huge impact on some of our, our citizens also. So what it does to existing policies is, is there's a thing called a pre-firm and post-firm. If your house was built before the maps were adopted, which in our case is the mid to late 70s, then you're considered a pre-firm map. So there's a recognition that, well, you really didn't know better. You didn't know it was a floodplain you're building next to the creek, you shouldn't have done something. But you didn't know it was a floodplain. So what those policies, they get what's called a subsidized rate. Instead of paying, so, instead of paying maybe five or six grand a year, they've been paying $1,200 to $2,200 a year. 60% of our policies are pre-firm. That's extremely high. The average for Colorado is 50% of the policies. The average nationwide is more like 10 or 15. It's a very low number. So we have a lot of pre-firm houses. If you're in that area and you get a new policy, then you're going to pay that full risk rate. If, if you've got a policy now, and I, I think those policies stay alone until you change something, but then they start ratcheting up, and in four years, you'll reach the full risk rate. And what that means is, is if your house maybe, is, is maybe three or four feet below the flood elevation, your new rate might go from $2,200 a year to like 10 or 12 grand a year. So it's a huge impact. Even if it's ratcheting up, you know, at 25% a year, that's still a big impact. You know, for some people, in a 30-year life of a mortgage, they'd pay almost as much for flood insurance as they would for their mortgage. So it's a, we think it's a really big deal, and we're trying to look at ways to try to mitigate some of that. The post-firm properties, the guys that were built after the flood maps were adopted, in theory, those houses were all built right and built above the floodplain. And so those guys would all be paying full risk rate already, which is fairly low because they should be built correctly. They may see some annual rate increases. Part of what they've done is they've started ratcheting in maybe a 5% per year rate increase, even on the folks that have done everything properly, trying to get the NFIP solvent again. And this is all federal government stuff. It's nothing the city was involved or, or had any say in. If you're, get a new policy, something all new policies have to do. So you have to go get an elevation certificate. You have to hire a surveyor that knows what he's doing to fill out a form and come out and shoot the finished floor of your house, get the elevation of it, and fill out this form that has all that data. That now determines what your policy was. Before, it was, you just sort of, you're in the floodplain or you're out of the floodplain. Now they're all going to need elevation certificates, which are going to cost between $400 and $1,000 apiece, is the number that we hear is thrown around for those. And then your rate's affected by how far above or below you are, and then, you know, how much, how much coverage you get and what your deductible is. It's like any other kind of insurance. If you have a really high deductible, then your rates are going to be lower than what they would be otherwise. If you're in the current mapped area and you come to a new policy, you just start out at full risk rate. So, you know, somebody's been there for, or they sell their house, and some new buyer comes in, the house ends up being three feet below. They suddenly have a $10,000, $12,000 a year floodplain insurance premium they have to pay, which, which I think is a big deal. If you're in the newly mapped areas, then there was a thing that was called grandfathering. So let's say you're in one of the newly mapped areas, and you suddenly decide, I want to go get flood insurance because I'm now in. Well, you could get grandfathered in with the rate you would have had previously, which is, I was out of the floodplain before, so the rate's really cheap. It's like $400 or $500 a year. That was supposed to be phased out starting in late 2014. We don't know if that's going to happen now with what Congress is doing now with some of this stuff. So, so some of our folks that, that, that are in that area that, that has shallow flooding north of where the Denver Water Ponds are, you know, I've talked to several of them, they have basements. And so their finished floor is not where their house floor is up here, it's where the basement floor is. So it's seven or eight feet below the flood elevation. They could very well have a $12,000, you know, $15,000, whatever the number's going to be, annual rate, depending on their policy. But if the grandfather's kept, they'll have maybe a $400 a year policy. So it's a huge deal on whether that gets phased out or not. So what can be done? This is the part we wonder about. If you're a property owner, these, these are sort of your options. You can get lower coverage or higher deductibles. Let's say you've got a two-story house, and I'm only going to cover the first floor. I'm in an area of shallow flooding, I'm thinking, the flood's not going to wipe my house out, it's just going to get everything wet. You could only cover the first floor. You could have a higher deductible. There are things you can do to try to minimize your, your payment on that. There are other things you can do mitigation-wise. You could raise your house. And this is one of the things that there's actually some FEMA grants available of like $30,000 you can get to actually just raise your house up. So if I'm way below the floodplain and I go and raise my house up five or six feet or three feet or something, and get up in that cheaper zone, you know, you'll pay off that 30 grand a whole lot cheaper. I can't remember if it's a grant or a loan, but either way, you know, you'll make up that difference very, very quickly. You can advance to your crawl space when they come out and shoot your, even if you're on a crawl space, your house is up. If you don't have the proper venting so the floodwaters can kind of flow through, then your insurance premium's going to be higher. And the last one seems like an extreme deal, but it really is an option for some people. If they've got a situation where they've got to get flood insurance, and they have a basement, and, and hopefully it's a basement they don't use much, filling the basement with gravel or concrete or something, just to have it not be a finished floor of the house, is an option. It's a pretty extreme measure to take. But, you know, if you're, if you're buying a $150,000 house and you've got a $1,000 a month house payment, do you really want to have a $1,000 or plus more flood insurance payments? So it, you know, it becomes, you wonder if the square footage down there becomes worth it. What can the city do? And one of the things we can do is increase our CRS rating and at least maintain what we have, but try to increase it. That's one thing. We provide technical advice to folks in our building department. Both our chief building official, our official and our, one of our inspectors are both floodplain knowledgeable guys. The chief building official was the floodplain administrator's previous jurisdiction, and the other guy's been through a lot of training. So we've got a lot of technical expertise to help people with things like vent space and building it higher, get your utilities out of the crawl space, get them up in the house. All those things can help. And then fund mitigation projects. We've got a couple of projects identified. One on Lena Gulch, where we bought the two houses, it's about a million and a half dollars that would get 15 houses completely out of the floodplain. We've got another project down by Clearvale that's about two and a half million dollars that would get a lot of the houses out and as a minimum, lower that flood elevation for the ones that are still in to make their insurance rates a lot more affordable. The problem is, we've never had a flood in Wheat Ridge. And so it's hard to qualify for grants if you don't have, you know, people that have actually lost. You know, and so we're kind of in the catch 22. These guys are all in the floodplain, but we've never had a flood, so it's hard to get, get money. If we can identify city dollars in some way to do some of these projects, we can actually get some help from Urban Drainage. They typically will match funds at a 50/50 ratio. So at least, you know, if we've got a two and a half million dollar project, now we're down a million and a quarter of city funds to try to do something. We don't have a million and a quarter, but, you know, if something like the sales tax gets passed or something along those lines, that's some of the things we could start trying to do to, to pull these people back out again and get their houses so that they're affordable again, and lower their risk of what's going on. So I talk really fast, so if you have any questions, let me know. If not, we can just keep charging forward.
Scott?
Yeah, the only question I have is on the, the minimum free board. It was two foot for the, there's a couple, four items that are on there.
Yeah.
The essential hazards, at-risk population, and the vital facilities. And I guess my question is, is, is two feet enough for the hazardous? You know, that, you know, if it's, if, you know, is that, is that reasoning? I mean, I know somewhere you got to draw the line, but...
Yeah, you know, generally speaking, the difference between, at, at least in Wheat Ridge, between the 100-year and the 500-year flood elevation, so it's the 1% chance versus the 0.2% chance flood, is, is generally less than a foot in most of the places in Wheat Ridge because we have some relatively wide flood. Once the 500-year hits, a lot more things get wet. And so that, that extra foot of distance beyond the one foot actually does provide a fair amount of coverage. And right now, as far as the essential facilities go, we don't have any of those that I know of in any of our floodplains. We do have some, we likely have some at-risk population groups because, because, because we've got, you know, a lot of group homes and things like that scattered around the city. We don't, I don't think we have any vital facilities. And the hazardous materials, we, we probably have some. We don't, as a city, track those facilities. But if someone comes in and wants a permit to do things, that's just one more thing we look at if that person's in the floodplain.
Thank you.
Steve?
I just have two questions, please. On this map, you showed it to us earlier on the blow-up, but that area north of 44th there, between Wadsworth and Kipling.
Right.
The south side looks like didn't really change at all, and the north side did change dramatically. Just curious why... Just curious why, you know, a reasoning for that?
The ridge. Because the, the south side of almost all of Clear Creek, the floodplain's right up against the bluff. You, you raise the flood elevation 10 feet and it moves five feet horizontally because the bluff is so steep. So that's why along that entire stretch, you look at, and this is the map of the whole thing. If you look along that entire stretch, you see on the south side, the elevations change almost not at all ever, or the, the boundary. On the north side though is where things are flatter. So when, when the floodwaters get constricted by something or whatever it is, they tend to push out to the north, not to the south. That's, that's the reason why. There's, there's just a, there's a 40-foot bluff there.
And then, a lot of your presentation dealt with residential. Would there be anything different if, for non-residential, for commercial industrial properties?
Non-residential, non-habitable spaces where people don't live, they just work kind of thing, are seen as, seen as a lower risk by, by FEMA and in the NFIP. And so they're allowed to do things like floodproofing. Everything below the flood elevation's got to be built with floodproof materials. If you're going to store hazardous materials in that building, it's got to be up above the flood elevation. So there are some rules and regulations, but there's a recognition that if this gets wet, maybe it's not as big a deal as it is if it's somebody's house. And so there are some floodproofing techniques that can be done that, that change things a little bit for, for those folks. Now, if they go get flood insurance for their facilities, it's still based on what their finished floor is. So it, it, it still does have an impact on what's going on, but it's seen a little bit differently from what residential does.
Thank you.
Amanda?
Yeah, I have some questions regarding how this does or doesn't connect with, with urban drainage. And I, and I spoke with you about this before a little bit, but, so just so you all are aware, being one of the only pervious locations at the bottom of a hill, the, the, the way the flooding, I, I'm on Lena Gulch, but my house is not. And Lena Gulch flooded into the floodplain, which is completely expected, but there was also an amazing amount, as in thousands and thousands of gallons of water coming from two other channels directly through the property that were, I assume, old irrigation channels. And, and they were coming off of street drainage. So, so basically Quail from the south side was a raging river from the west side of Prospect Elementary, right down into Lena Gulch. I, I mean, dangerous kind of water, huge. And then there was also, and there is also a drainage from a pond that's on the property that was much less so. But I was just, I was just amazed. I took pictures of it. So, so there, I, one thing I'm concerned about as far as affecting the floodplain and, and whether these maps are realistic or not is how does the urban drainage, because essentially you're creating canyons of water, right, that are coming off the streets into the areas that are getting flooded, right? Because the floodplain is supposed to take up the water. And so, and then my, my other sort of question...
Can we talk about that one first?
Sure. We can talk about that one first. Yep, yep.
What, what happens with floodplains is, is the, the tributary area, the part that drains to the, the water course, the drainage way, has to be a certain size for FEMA to recognize it to want to go map it. And so for instance, the thing that comes off of Quail Street is, is like one of those unnamed tributaries, or I think we may call it the Quail Tributary. But we know it's there. Urban Drainage knows it there. There have been projects up and down it in the past. A lot of, as that area south of there developed, they put all the storm pipes where that tributary used to run through the fields and those all pretty much spit out onto that property that's at 32nd Avenue just west of Quail. And so those, I've talked with those folks too. It's a huge impact on their property every time it rains because they just got this raging torrent next to their house. And, and they're not in the floodplain at that house. Now, they could go buy flood insurance. I would, if I was them, for like $400 or $500 a year and then they'd be covered in case something happened.
Yeah.
But it's just, the tributary area upstream of that's not big enough for FEMA to want to go map it. Now, some jurisdictions choose to map their unnamed tributaries and actually regulate floodplains along those unnamed tributaries. Those smaller tributaries. We have not done that as a city. I don't know that there's any big push to do that, but some of them do that. We actually get more points if we do that kind of thing, so I'd be very supportive of it. But, I mean, you know, some of that's just a dollar thing of, of, you know, you've got to go through all the same level of detail you do with these studies and these studies are not cheap. They're, they, they cost, I don't know what the, I don't know what the funding was on, on redoing all these because I wasn't here when this was all started. But, you know, it's a big deal to map them, but some places do. And sometimes, you know, if a developer comes in and wants to develop something, we may make them map the floodplain through at least their property and then we'll add that to our maps and regulate it as such, even if it's outside of the regulatory floodplain that FEMA's established.
Okay. So, so anybody can get flood insurance?
Yeah.
Even if they're outside of the, I mean, and, and I don't happen to need it for that particular issue.
Right.
I was just amazed at the danger of...
Yeah, there's a lot of water.
It was just an amazing amount of water, not only coming down Lena Gulch, but coming directly from the south, down Quail, into the property, into this raging river.
That's where it passes under 32nd Avenue. Yeah, and then spits out where that subdivision has, has almost happened a few times. Yeah. Yeah, so you know, there, there are a lot of places in the city that actually have a fair amount of water. Right now, a lot of it just flows in the city streets. You know, we're doing a project on 29th Avenue to alleviate some flooding south of 29th, just west of Sheridan. That whole area north of the Richard Hard estate experiences flooding every time it rains. And so we're doing a project there to try to suck some of that water down underground and, and deal with it in a much better way. So we do have a lot of those areas, but we don't map, we don't always map all those areas just because they're too small to map. But, but back to the thing about anybody can get flood insurance. I live up on top of the bluff, so I'm 40 feet above the 50 feet above the floodplain. But one of my neighbors, one street over at the end of the street, his basement flooded because the entire street runs down and runs right by his house. And with the hail we had on September 9th, it blocked up the drainage along his fence that was there and it just overflowed into his basement and flooded. Now, he could have bought flood insurance even though he's 50 feet above the floodplain. He would have paid a super cheap rate. He would have paid a super cheap rate, but you know, at least he would have been covered because homeowner's insurance doesn't, doesn't cover flooding.
Right.
When it, when it comes into your house from those means. Right. Even that, it won't cover anything. It doesn't cover anything for it. Now, if a tree falls on your house and knocks a hole in it and then your house floods, homeowner's insurance will cover that. But homeowner's insurance won't cover flooding that comes in through windows or, or doors or those kind of things.
Do you have any data on, on, because that's exactly what happened to my house that's on the front of the property?
Right.
On the bluff.
Right.
And, but because I'm in sort of a bathtub coming down the hill on 38th, that entire, as the lowest area, it just, I was in three feet of water literally and it was up to my door. And it didn't come in, but my entire crawl space was, was, was filled. And, and it was exactly that issue is I, you know, I have a culvert that goes in a ditch in the front of the property, but it was, I mean, it was dangerous water. You know, like, and I was just curious sort of how in this community we think about secondary flooding and I'm curious how many people were affected by secondary flooding and know that they can get flood insurance.
We have a list. Yeah, we have a list of, of folks that, that are affected by secondary flooding, as you call it.
Am I on the list?
I don't know that, well, there's, there is a project to do something along 38th Avenue because we, there's no storm sewer on 38th from, from Youngfield all the way down to Lena Gulch. There's virtually no storm sewer. What you're talking about is actually an irrigation ditch where the culverts are in there and that kind of thing. And the problem with the, the storm on September 9th, we do think that was very close to a 100-year event for our city.
Yeah, except that it happened...
But, it had hail.
In, in July.
You know, it had hail and so it was, it was one of those things that, and the storm in July was about an inch and a half of rain. So that'd be more like about a 10-year event. You know, but most storm sewer that we build is for the two to five-year event, you know? And so there's a recognition, there's always going to be a lot of water flowing on the ground when we have these big storms. And especially in a place where we have no storm sewer, you have a lot of water flowing over the ground. So yeah, anybody can buy flood insurance. My house survived a 100-year flood, so I'm probably not going to do it.
Well, I would just love to figure out how to, how to let people know.
Yeah.
Because I just, you know, I, I know about floodplains and I know, you know, but the sort of the secondary flooding, I just sort of didn't have any...
Well, and we've, we've done, as a part of this whole project, we've done a tremendous amount of outreach. We, we had our open house meeting. Because the open house meeting got publicized really well by the city, we put it in Mayor's Matters, we put it in a couple of other, we put it on our website and things. Some of the local news media outlets picked up on it. We also contacted the Transcript and the Your Hub folks and, and they ran articles. There were two articles that they were posted about it. The Transcript ran an article about it. I think they're planning on running something about the actual adoption of the maps now that, now that we're getting close to the point where adopting them. Also, John Bowman came out to see me from Channel 31 and did a quick little story about the floodplains and what we're doing in our little city. We had, we've, we've had a lot of publicity and a lot of it was because, let's face it, we started this in October, it was three weeks after, you know, they'd had historic flooding north of us. We really dodged the bullet on that.
I want to make an interjection. The more typical call we get is, how do we get out of having to have flood insurance? Now, hopefully the storm has raised the awareness level, but people don't want to pay it until something like this happens and then they can't, there is a 30-day waiting period before it becomes effective. So it's like, oh, 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 here it comes, here it comes down Clear Creek, let's call our insurance agent. Well, guess what? It's too late. So hopefully people now are a little bit more aware just exactly what you're talking about, Amanda.
A lot of people that are coming out of the floodplain that live downstream of the Maple Grove Reservoir, you know, my comment to a lot of them is, you're out now, you cannot pay your $1,200, well, you will be in February, you'll be out. You won't have to pay your $1,200 a year that you've been paying there. But, you know, for $400 a year, you can have some peace of mind just in case the reservoir ever pops. With the storm that hit on September 9th, they were, the water was, I think, a foot away from them popping the gates open.
Yeah, I know.
It literally was a foot away. I was watching the map, you know, you're watching the little graph come up. It actually got above their, their spillway elevation, but they did, they chose not to pop because they saw what was coming upstream, they saw that it was reducing, they thought they'd be okay and they were. And so they didn't have to pop the gates open. If they'd popped the gates open, this would be a very different conversation about what happened along Lena Gulch. You know, we, we would have, there are at least three or four houses I know of that would have gotten wet, basements, if they'd popped those gates open from that storm. We dodged the bullet on, I mean, we, we really dodged a bullet with that September 9th storm. With having the amount of rainfall we had and having the hail mixed in with it, you know, we, we got a lot of phone calls, but, but we, we just, we didn't get near the impact of what people had north of us.
Okay. I just...
And you had a second question?
Wanted to, I think you addressed my second question. Thank you.
Thanks.
Alan?
Alan? I have two questions. First question is, did we lose points by the properties that came out of the floodplain?
No, we actually get five points. There's a, there's a real simple math, this, this is a great manual. If you're ever really bored and want to read something, it's 614 pages long. I only read about 400 pages because I didn't read about coastal flooding, I didn't read about repetitive losses because we've never had a loss, we have no repetitive losses. There's, and I set up a spreadsheet that's, that's 300, 400 rows long to try to calculate our stuff to see what we want to try and go for. For every property you buy and, and remove the house and you're basically remove the house out of the floodplain because we removed the house, you get five points as a simple calculation. There's a more complicated calculation that they've changed a little bit with the new, with the new manual, we may actually get more than five points for each one of these things. And this is one of those cases where nickel and diming works really well. You have to get 500 points to move up a class. But if I can get five or 10 more points, 50 to 100 times, I'm now up a class. And so little things like the, the floodplain open house, the meeting we had in October, we're going to probably make that an annual event, just because we can get about 30. If we cover all the topics we're supposed to cover, we get like 36 points for doing that. And so again, if I do enough of those kind of things, you know, we, we send out mailings, we have brochures, we have articles in the connections, we'll definitely take credit for the news stories that were done about us and we'll keep trying to reach out to those folks to do news stories, to talk about. If you have a basement, I, if I had a basement even where I live, I'd have flood insurance. I have a crawl space, so I don't. And I don't have any utilities in there, so I don't, I don't, in my mind, I don't need flood insurance. But if I had a basement, I don't care where I lived, I'd have flood insurance. Because again, if I'm out of the floodplain, it's like 400 bucks a year, you're paying $40 a month. You know, the, the guy that got flooded at the end of the street, he lost his washers, dryer, a couple of freezers, all of his wife's art supplies, I mean, it was, everything was floating because there was four feet of water in his basement. You know, so it's, it's that kind of a thing that, that we're going to continue to do that kind of outreach to get a certain number of points doing that. But we get a huge chunk just from having so much of our floodplain and open space. You know?
Thank you.
So no, we didn't lose, sorry.
Oh, no, it's fine. Second question, since the, the open house, there wasn't kind of a synopsis of the open house, what were the general themes raised by the citizens?
We, we gave almost the exact same presentation. We also had a federal person there, somebody from FEMA who was in town because of the floods, came and gave a quick presentation about the impact of Bigger and Waters. I learned a lot. I'm not sure many of our residents did because it was a very kind of dry, technical presentation. But, you know, we, we've learned some things from, from those things. And we also had a representative from the state, we had all our floodmaps, we had a couple of computers set up where people could go look at their properties on our GIS system. The mapping that, that we have on the screen is from our GIS system, so you can actually zoom in, pop the aerial open, see exactly where the house is compared to the flood. I mean, it really is an amazing resource for us. us. And so the, the feedback from most of those folks, whereas, you know, whenever you have a meeting like this, you sort of expect, expect pitchforks and torches. It wasn't that way. They recognized what's going on, that we, as a city, are trying to help them all through this process. So it was a really, in my mind, a really positive meeting. We had a lot of people ask a lot of really good questions about, I have a basement, what's the impact of that, you know? And so we, we had a lot of great conversations on, on those kind of things. The gal from the state really helped us out with, with answering some questions from people, because she knows a lot more than I do about this stuff. So, you know, a lot of this, it was, in my mind, it turned out to be a very positive meeting from the standpoint that, that, you know, we had sent letters directly to everybody that in the floodplain to invite them to the meeting. And so we had a great response. And I think it was, it worked out really well. I think it was, it was informative and a lot of folks got, got a lot of good information out of it. So, you know, I don't know. Again, most of those people, their stance is, I have to get flood insurance now. It's not, oh, I have the opportunity to get flood insurance because I'm in the floodplain so that I can have a level of protection for my, for my family. If you're in the floodplain, the odds of your house being destroyed by a flood is multiple factors higher than from a fire, but almost everybody has no problem getting fire insurance. So it's just, it's a matter of educating people, what's your level of risk, what's going to happen to you. In the 30-year life of a mortgage, if you're in a 100-year floodplain, you have a 23% chance of getting wet. That's pretty high. You know, a lot higher than I'd be comfortable with. I'd, I'd, well, I wouldn't buy a house in the floodplain, but I'd also get flood insurance if, if I, if I did.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sure.
So, are there any other questions based on what was, has come up? Okay, then I think I'm open to entertaining a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, a move to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance amending Article 8 of Chapter 26 concerning floodplain control for the following reasons. Number one, it reflects new state legislation. Number two, adopts the new firm maps. Number three, it updates language to match current industry standards. And number four, it modifies administrative review processes.
Second? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Oop. Amanda, go for Amanda. She said it first. Yeah. Well, any other comments? So I'm going to make one real quick. As some of you know, I've been working on the flood recovery as, for the last three months. And base flood elevations are a critical thing. Everybody walks around saying BFE in the area. And I can tell you, it's, it's a huge amount of money that the flood insurance has paid out so far. It's an enormous amount of money. And the people who have it have taken advantage of it. The people who don't have it, I'm on the back end of the case management system, hearing those citizens that didn't have insurance. And it's, it's heartbreaking because not only, in this case, they lost their home. Their home's nothing. It's, it's white. It's downstream in Nebraska at this point. So it's very important that we do this. So thank you, first of all, for coming tonight. Thank you, citizens. And we do this once a year or whenever as regulatory or statutory, but it's very, very important and we appreciate your efforts. Thank you. So with that, let's vote.
Motion approved, five to zero.
So I will close the public hearing and we will go on to other items?
Oh, let's see. We are going to, and Mark, you might want to just listen, chime in if you have any comment. We're going to City Council on December 16th to discuss recommendations for the 38th Avenue street section design. Correct? Anything you want to add?
It's a study session, right?
Study session.
Yep.
Yeah, we hired a consultant back in July to help us with some conceptual design. And they come up with two alternatives. All that information's going to be in the packet once that comes out. So you guys can go look at it if you want to. It's basically just some very, very conceptual, high-level, you know, what do we really want things to look like? I mean, to the point of, we like this, not this particular, but this style of trashcan over this style of trashcan. So it's those kind of things. We've done a, we've done a lot of outreach to, to try to get through that with the public and things. We had, we had an online survey where people could pick image preferences and, and we had 330 people complete the survey, which I think is a huge number for that kind of a thing. So we think we've got some really good data. We're going to make that presentation to City Council on the 16th and then see where we go from there. We're asking not just for them to sort of pick the kit of parts, the different pieces, parts we're going to get, but also to let us know if we keep charging down this path or if we slow down and, and, you know, wait till we get money to do something or those kind of things.
Is there anything else?
Let's see, what else? Ridge at 38, the tree lighting ceremony is Sunday from 3:00 until 7:00 with activities for the family and so on and so forth. Tree, the tree lights at 6:00. So we try to encourage folks to come out. It's supposed to be cold, so wear long johns, but...
I have one question. So there is a real estate sign on the Elway property. And on that sign, it says under contract. Do we know anything about that?
Um, not much at my level.
Okay.
But there have been discussions with potential purchasers and developers.
Okay, okay. It's, it's subtle, but I caught my eye.
Eagle eye.
Yeah. What's in red lettering, so you can't miss it. But, yeah, that was, I didn't, okay.
And the city now, is it the city that owns that site and that cleaned, cleaned it up?
We own the, what used to be the used car portion on the north property. It's the, the building that's over towards Yukon.
Yep.
The city bought that with urban renewal funds. So we, we control that now. That was a big, kind of a, the missing link. So-
But the other part, is the other property, the bigger property, not the one to the south, but the bigger, that where the building stands?
Right.
Is that still owned by multiple?
Yes, but apparently there has, there is an assembly occurring.
Oh, good.
So, so we are being cautiously optimistic that that will continue. Let's, we do have a meeting December 19th. It's two subdivision cases, two minor subdivision cases. So if, if folks are going to be out of town, I know that's kind of a tough week coming up to the Christmas holiday, just let us know in advance. We will have a new member from District 4 appointed on December 9th. And that still means we have another opening. And hopefully council is working on trying to get somebody, a full commission, so.
So what's the one we're missing? Sorry to-
If, I think it's another District 4.
Okay.
Do you have your list, Kim?
And for those in the audience on the, on TV, if it is District 4, that, and granted, you can, you can be from another district and represent, but District 4 boundaries are?
Let's see. Generally north of Clear Creek to the northern city limit lines, Kipling ish to the western city limit lines, which is basically not a hill.
Yeah, that's what I thought.